I will call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. It is March twentieth, Thursday, twenty twenty five, and the time is six oh nine P M. Let us stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Welcome, everybody. First on the agenda is Citizens comments. Do we have any? Nope, I don't believe so. Okay. Next is deliberation and determination on cases. Today, we have zoning case number four three six zero. The Commission will conduct the public hearing on case number four three six zero, a request for zoning change from A two, single family residential, to M one multifamily for the property located at two hundred West Enon Avenue. Cases heard at this hearing today will be heard at the April eighth City Council meeting. To achieve a timely and orderly meeting, the Commission asks that the following rules and procedures be respected. Each case will be called in sequence as listed on the agenda unless otherwise directed by the Chair. All ensuing dialogue shall be directed to the zoning commission only. After the staff presentation, the applicant and support will be given an opportunity to speak for three minutes each to present their case. Opposition may then speak for three minutes each. At the conclusion of the opposition, the applicant will be granted three minutes for rebuttal. Continuation beyond the speaker's allotted time will be at the sole discretion of the Chair. Those who are unable to speak today are encouraged to submit written comments or sign up to speak at City Council. Following the official close of each case hearing, the Commission will remain in open session to deliberate and vote on the item in question. During that time, no further testimony or commentary will be allowed unless directed by the Chair. Okay. Shall we start?
All right. So the the case before you, as mentioned, is going to be for two hundred West Enon. We've got a presentation behind you. The request is going to be for two hundred West Enon, A two, single family to M one, two-family residential duplex. The petitioner is Jorge Sandoval, and he's present today. Future land use is identified as a single-family residential compatible but not consistent. The impacts where proposed duplex may potentially have a small impact on traffic due to proximity to elementary campus and permitted vehicle per unit. Limited driveway accessibility would result in vehicles likely parked on the roadway. Minimal to no impact expected on our infrastructure. The staff recommendation is for denial. The multifamily housing is not consistent with the future land use plan. Approving such as zoning change would essentially qualify the owner as initially initiated a spot zoning and may set an unmanageable precedent for future cases. The this is the current zoning map. The star represents the the location in question. As you can see, color-coded, it's currently zoned as A two residential. The green area that you find to your left, that's going to be the elementary school. And then surrounding is going to be single-family. Here's an overhead view. This is what is considered two hundred and then the one oh three Cunningham. Currently, within our systems, we only have two hundred West Enon as the as an address, as a residential address. The one oh three North Cunningham did not exist within our system nor within TAD. Here's a street view from Google Maps. This is a view looking north from Enon. And continuing on. And from going northbound on Cunningham now. So the two hundred West Enon residence is going to be right there on the left side. The doorway is going to be facing south with the adjoining double garage right there is going to be the interluding spot between that. And on the backside, you can see just over the white sedan, you can see what would be the the door for one oh three North Cunningham. One more view. There we go. All right. We'll go back to that first slide real quick. So that home exists there currently. The 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 case is for transition. The home is currently zoned as A two, single family, and they would like to they're requesting to rezone to M one, two-family residential or duplex. The and then, as you see, if you'd like, do you want me to read through the impact or the staff recommendation? Okay. So the staff, it is, and they're not recommending a demolition or anything. They would like to utilize the existing structure for this. But the in question is, was it allowable? Because we currently don't have one oh three North Cunningham as an actual address within our jurisdiction. The only address for that that parcel of land is two hundred West Enon.
Basically, they're going to split the house that's existing into two.
So one thing to point out, this this residence has been used for an extended period of time as a duplex, an apartment, prior to being sold. It was listed on Zillow as a duplex. There's been work that has been done. I think that I think that's how this case came to this commission, correct?
Yes.
City staff identified that there was work being done at the property without a permit, which initiated an enforcement action. You started conversation.
Actually, initially, the 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 request to release electrical was presented via email.
Okay.
And because we didn't have the address of one oh three North Cunningham, we weren't able to contact Encore to release a meter that we didn't know existed. And then we dug further. We found that there's only one water service to the property as well. And then upon visiting the location, I discovered that there was a substantial amount of work that was done to the home to remodel. And it would, I would venture to say, that does look substantially better. But there was mechanical HVAC, electrical, and battery done to the property. So that's where the conversation started.
So there's there's some complexity here because the the current owner, to the owner's credit, purchased the property in which TAD reflected the property was zoned multifamily. TAD often has these kinds of errors. There is nothing in the deeds. There's no ordinances. We've done due diligence going back and determined that this is not zoned multifamily. It's zoned A two, single-family residential. So to the current owner's credit, believing that I don't I don't think he did this with the belief that it was zoned single-family. Wholeheartedly believe that ownership believed it was zoned multifamily. It's not. That's what prompted the zoning change to come here for you guys to address. The looking back and consulting with legal on it, the current lot sizes, it is a small lot, they are just barely compliant with multifamily zoning setbacks and everything. So he's good on the setback requirements and everything associated with with the zoning. The one area that is of concern is that M one zoning does require them for a duplex to provide a minimum of five off-street parking spaces to be approved. Don't believe this site has that.
It doesn't stand a driveway with them.
And that may be something that the zoning commission wishes to discuss. But what what I would recommend is is Chair, I would recommend that you allow the owner to come up and present his case. I don't think we have any any opposition here tonight to hear from. So it's up to you if you want to give him just three minutes or six minutes to kind of pitch his case, and then we can deliberate on it some more and discuss options. If the direction from the zoning commission is you're wanting to approve this with conditions, I think we can do that. But I would ask that we recess for just a minute so I can consult with legal to find out exactly how we do that, just to make sure we do it the right way. But I think you have the option either way. Quite honestly, and I know the Chair has had the opportunity to review the attorney's comments on this, it can it can go either way. There's some there's some concerns with moving it over to to M one. I think the the biggest concern that staff has is is concern about the precedent of allowing single lots within A two zoning to convert to multifamily. Is this going to become a trend? And at what point and under what conditions do we control that trend to where it's manageable? This is no different than how we deal with flooding and the problems that we've had with flooding. When you have one property that complies with allowing a little bit of runoff, not a big deal. When you have thirty-two properties allowing a little bit of runoff, that little bit of runoff has become a big problem. And that's that's the concern here is, okay, if this becomes a trend and we've we've allowed it once, we have to stay with that precedent. Is that going to become a problem down the line? So just a few things to consider. But Chair, I would recommend allowing ownership to present his case to you, and then we can deliberate on it however you would like.
If I may add one thing, just to piggyback on what he said, it's also, as Senior Manager mentioned, it's our fears with the trend, that it's also considered transitional, that style of zoning is considered transitional. So it wants it's moved from single-family, A two, into a multifamily, then we become a transitional zone. And the the greater fear is that with the precedent set, is somebody going to come in behind and request us to move it to a multifamily apartment dwelling or something to that nature? Because they bought four lots in a row, buying up all that next year. Because you traditionally wouldn't go from an A two straight to a multifamily apartment community. But within a transitional zone, if you have a duplex, that would be considered a pathway to that transitional zone. So that's a that's what accompanies the fear.
Right. Jorge?
Looking at the inside, the guy we bought her from, he had done he had done a bunch of work already to it on the inside. What we did is a bunch of cosmetic stuff to the interior of the apartment, and we did add the HVAC. We did do that. We go to get the power on, and then we ran into the roadblock. I do have a few papers here that show like the past years where it shows it's two hundred West Enon and one oh three Cunningham. I got like a route from the post office and talked to one of the workers at the post office. They remember delivering mail at one oh three Cunningham, which is the back of it. I also have ESID number from Encore that they did deliver power to that property at once, the one oh three Cunningham. So I just, I don't know why I'm having trouble with it. I honestly feel like it was a somebody told me the city got rezoned at some point. I think there was a mistake when they zoned our place with the zoning. Well, knowing what I know and then having what I got, it does have the two separate meters on it. It has Encore lock on the one side where I try to get power to it. So there's a process to get power to. You need to pull the permit and all that. So it's really not making sense like why there's not no record of it, too. That's kind of where I'm confused on that.
How far back does it show that the records were A one? See, that's all we've been able to find.
Yeah, there's nothing changing it from the original zoning. We have we have no ordinances on record changing that from the original zoning established in nineteen fifty, sixty, somewhere in that range.
So basically, what somebody did was just come in there, do it themselves without telling anybody, started writing it out, got power in there, and I mean, I don't know, they don't care, they'll hook up to whatever.
Asking to speculate on something on the record, if I had to speculate, and it's all this is is purely speculation, is most likely, yes. Prior prior ownership probably came in unpermitted, created a duplex, and submitted a request in Encore, assigned an address. Getting a postal address does not require city approval, don't have to show deeds or records of any kind to get a postal address.
And previous to, without a doubt, back when the the electrical service was provided this, it didn't, most of the time, they didn't reach out to the to each city and say, do we need a release for this meter? That is one of the newer improvements within the system. So but I can confirm, I could verify exactly what what he what the the petitioner's stating that they do have, it has previously had electrical service, it has previously received mail. And what TAD reflects, he's that it's all completely correct. The only issue is that we don't reflect that within any of our systems.
Yeah, I mean, to be to be honest, if this was done through the proper city procedure, it would not have been assigned a separate address because it is still planted as one lot. So the lot would have remained the same address. It would have had a separate subcode address if it was done through the city. So it would have been, you know, two hundred suite A, two hundred suite B, or two hundred suite one, two hundred suite two, whatever whatever that is.
And if we change this, that means my son, my kids would do that.
Yep.
Lives Catty Corner.
Potentially. So there.
I mean, he can, I mean, if we approve it here, like we can start.
Keep in mind, there is there is some there is some guardrails that are in place, like what we talked about. If tonight, the zoning commission approves a recommendation to council to approve a zoning change to multifamily, the owner of the property would still have to comply with all the standards in the multifamily zoning. That was the attorney who I stepped out to spoke speak with. Can't necessarily set conditions, but ownership needs to be aware that they wouldn't be able to obtain any building or renovation permits unless it complied with the current standard, meaning the five parking spaces, off-street parking spaces would would have to exist there and be identified in the plans, which I don't know if ownership's willing to do that or not. That's not it's not really what we're supposed to be deciding on. We're just supposed to be deciding on whether or not the zoning is appropriate and contiguous with like zoning. It's it's kind of on the fine line. If it is all residential, so it's not like we're looking at putting heavy industrial inside of a residential area or one single-family lot in the middle of an industrial. inside of a residential area or one single family lot in the middle of an industrial complex. So it's, it's, it's not, um, it's compatible, but it's not consistent with our future land use, if that makes sense.
If it doesn't have the parking for the pile of cars, then it's not multifamily ready right now.
Would not, it would not get permitted. It would, it would, it would get hung up in the building permit space.
Either way, it's not going to matter.
Right.
You can't go in.
It has to be an improved surface, I believe, so either asphalt or cement. I think both qualify. Um, it is, if you need it, it is section 4.5.3 of the zoning code. Um, it references, I'm sorry, I, I lied to you. Article 6 of the zoning code, section 65A, says that duplex dwelling, a minimum of five total spaces is required. Um, has to be off-street. So either asphalt or concrete, um, I believe are acceptable, is that correct?
They just have to meet the specific PSI rating, so that, that would determine the thickness of it and the, and the consistency of the material.
Um, either, either one would be acceptable. And I think, I, I mean, quite honestly, I don't think it's going to take you much to, to achieve that because I think, and, and this is an I think, this is not an official city statement here by any means, it looks like you may already potentially have four spaces there, if that, if that properly holds to and meets the code. I don't, I don't know.
It was just me thinking up that. If he's not legally up to the standards of an M1, should we wait? Basically say no, let him come back when he gets it up to an M1 and then come back?
No, because that is really not what the process would be for any like builder, developer, or any other, any other property owner. Uh, the first step always is a zoning change. Um, for example, somebody buys a, a blank piece of property and wants to come in and put in a fast food restaurant and that property's zoned agricultural, uh, before they can even begin the process of permitting and everything else, they have to do the rezone. They have to get that property zoned appropriately. So, uh, the first, he, he is technically at the first correct step here. If, if to, to make this right and to fix everything is to get it rezoned to M1, which would be two-family residential.
Hey, Landon, can you touch on the transitional zone thing one more time?
You, you, being at A2, you wouldn't, it would still be considered a residential zone if it was at, with a multifamily. In order to go from a, A2, you've got to have some, I, I, typically in a larger city, there are going to be a, a larger area and so you would have your single family homes and you would have a transitional zone, your duplex with your, with your side-by-side units, and then they would go into your multifamily apartment community with two, three-story, um, buildings. This, it, it essentially will develop that transitional zone, which would give a petitioner grounds to come in and say, I would like to purchase the, through the four homes that make up the block that's adjacent on the, the east side, and I would like to do, uh, a few little townhomes that are, that are three-story and, and, uh, a row of those. It would give them that pathway in order to have a justifiable claim. Uh, well, you've now established a, a, a transitional zone from the A2 single family home. Now it's, it, we're not going to have this total opposite landscape, uh, abutting.
Yeah, the side has, uh, an entrance, a completely separate entrance. Uh, Craig, you had mentioned that, uh, does, denial does not mean demolition, so what would it mean?
So regardless of the outcome here, state law requires that all zoning cases first have to come here. You guys make a recommendation. It will still go to the city council meeting on April the 8th, I believe, April 8th, uh, for them to hear. And then at that point, they'll know your recommendation. Um, so denial tonight doesn't mean it's not going to be, be rezoned. It, it really just means that's your recommendation to the city council is for denial. Um, now, city council clearly appoints you to this position for a reason, so whatever recommendation comes out of here comes pretty heavy. I mean, they're going to take that under very due consideration, whatever recommendation you have. Um, but, uh, if council goes to it, there's a few different options. They can deny it. With a denial, there's nothing that would stop the applicant from reapplying for a zoning change. He can reapply it again and again and again as much as he wants. Um, if he didn't, if, if it's a denial with prejudice, that means that he cannot resubmit for a rezone for a year. If they deny with extreme prejudice, I believe it's five years is, is the term. Um, those are rare, they don't, they don't typically happen. Um, it's, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't stop him from, from coming back with other options or other plans, but he could, he could essentially reapply, so.
Okay, and he wouldn't tear anything down, or would he still get power to it, or?
No, so unless this property was rezoned, he's kind of at a stopping point unfortunately with building permits and everything else. Um, it is not a substandard property, I believe. I don't think this is anything, we're not, we're not talking about the city going in. None of those discussions have happened. Um, but he is, he, he has recently bought this property, correct, in like April of last year?
Yeah.
So about, about April of last year, he acquired this property. Um, he is attempting to fix it up, if I understand, so that he can, uh, operate and, and lease this property out. Um, he has been working without a permit, but he's trying to do the right thing now, it sounds like, after, uh, working with the fire chief and getting the permits. Unfortunately, the permits can't be issued until the zoning is, is correct and, and cleaned up. Um, once that zoning is correct and cleaned up, then the permits, he can go back through the permitting process, get the appropriate permits to fix it up the right way and, and move forward with what it is. Without the correct zoning, it's just at a stop. So his options would be to either reapply for zoning and try to get it passed that way, um, or convert it into a single family dwelling as it's zoned for. Those would be the two options.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the 200 West Enon is currently inhabited, correct? So the front portion is already, has, has a tenant. The, the location, the, the 103 is location that's in question.
So 103 is empty? Yeah, 103 is empty. So when we bought it, uh, 200, he'd been there 28 years that he's lived there? So I'm getting a lot of this, he's letting me in on a lot of the stuff, like the 103, and they used to get their own mail and all of that. He knows, he said he's been there 28 years and since he can remember, the guy that owned it, his dad lived in the back. So he filled me in on, he used to get his mail there. They used to say, uh, pay separate bills also. So he's kind of the one giving me the...
And that seems, that sounds consistent, that, I think, the, 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 the things that he's mentioning that do reflect a separate address, I mean, if it's, if it's a, a son and his, and his father, you know, Jack and Jill style home, it would, it would, it's never had two separate, you know, outstanding family tenants per se, and so, um, it, it wasn't a, a, an unformidable task for them to obtain power to the, to the home or to get their mail there. Um, and so it wasn't necessarily before this ever, while it may have been considered a duplex, it was a father and son who were living there...
Right.
...in an attached building type thing. So, uh, this presents a different scenario where it's going to be legitimately two unknowing tenants. I can say, we, we, I, we can't find any records of any permits.
You don't have permits or zoning?
We have nothing for the previous electrical inspection. I, I, I can confirm that everything that is needed is there, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the city knew that that was being installed or ever communicated with Encore and said that this is a, that it's been inspected, it's approved, you can, you can place the meter here. We have no records whatsoever.
That don't even bother us, man, is the pan door, the box would be up there. Because if we do that, there's a house next door, like you said, or...
It would, it would, yeah, it would encourage anybody with an extra room to say, let's just draw a line.
Yeah, but not, not as far as zoning, because if we do it for you, then we have to do it for the next guy that comes in, the next guy. Pretty soon we've got duplexes all over town, apartments, whatever. I know, I wasn't, I wasn't fond of them. I know, I've never went in and built. But it's the change that we've got to take it to.
Is there, is there anything else? Because they're going to need to deliberate...
Right.
...and talk amongst themselves. So is there anything else you want to share with them before they deliberate and decide on a case? Okay.
Thank you, Jorge, I appreciate it.
Do you own any other properties like this, or is this?
Not today.
Okay. Okay, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Chair, I'll say, the sta, I mean, the staff recommendation is denial. It can go either way. Um, the attorney has said it can go either way. Um, again, whatever decision comes out of here, keep in mind, it's just that's the recommendation that's going to go to council.
Right.
Council's probably going to have to battle with a lot of the same thoughts that all of you are having of...
Right.
This, this is not exactly an easy zoning case. I know that most of our zoning cases are pretty cut and dry, this is not one of those, unfortunately. Um, there is...
It just bothers me that the city let that be a duplex for a hundred years, whatever.
Uh-huh. I think it's an issue now because it's trying to be formalized, right? As to where before, it was just kind of like under the table, like, yeah, we'll just do this. Now that it needs to be formalized, obviously there's going to be an issue.
And that, and that's why I mentioned the, it was a father and son, while, I, I guess if we would, technicality, we'd call it a duplex, but it's a family living, I mean, it's a father and son, it's family living there and they just had def, separate dormitory. And so that's, because there was no changeover in ownership, there was no changeover in tenantship, there wasn't any need for, uh, a changeover in, uh, power or water service. It never came on the radar of the city for it to become, uh, rezoned. And, and, and unfortunately for, for the new owner, I, I do, I see that, that, that is, it's a horrible situation that it wasn't ever properly addressed before, but it was never an issue before.
My concern is like changing this to duplex and everything, is when you look at the area, the homes around it, the school and everything, it's an area that was, is single families, you know? And you look at more, more cars, more traffic, more, you know, I know it's just another part of it, but it's still, uh, is affecting the area and it's setting precedent that you're talking about, that more can come in like this, slip in. And I, I, I don't know, there's a lot of new stuff coming in, but there's a lot of parts of every one that we want to say similar to what it's always been or slowly, you know, improved in time, but not, you know, we see it anyway.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we have to, for us, for commissioners of planning and zoning, we do have to remember that, that is our main point of view. Um, and council obviously has a much bigger point of view. Obviously they rely on us for more specific things like this, but, um, you know, we have to remember that, we, that, that's it, planning and zoning, that, that's why we're here. Uh, do we have a, would anybody like to make a motion, or do y'all want to discuss anymore? Any other comments, suggestions?
If he makes it like into a duplex, as far as he's going to go, right? He's not going to try to make it into an apartment later on.
Let me, let me clarify. It is already a duplex. It has operated as a duplex for the last 30 years, full transparency. It has operated as a duplex for the last 30 years. So, I mean, just, just, just being upfront and honest, uh, no, his plans are not to expand it into an apartment complex. That would be a whole nother zoning case, um, and that would absolutely be a denial because, uh, well, the recommendation would obviously be at the, at denial. The lot size wouldn't comply with a, a, the M2 zoning that's required. So there's just no way. He, he would have to acquire significant more land in order to, to make that an apartment complex. So there's no way to expand it beyond the two-family zoning that he's seeking now. Um, essentially what the petitioner is seeking is the proper zoning for what it has already operated as for the last 30 years. What you have to decide is, okay, do we grant that or do we not grant that out of, out of concern that we may have other A2s as well seek to do the same thing? I will also add, there is legislation currently being discussed and deliberated on down in Austin that may change all of this anyway. Um, there is a significant push to allow for, um, things that we're going to have to discuss as a zoning commission and change our zoning laws on, uh, regarding allowing people to live in sub-units in the backyard. Uh, you've seen people build these, these storage sheds and those kinds of things and allow people, uh, that, that may be built by rights. So that may have an impact on, on specifically this case and, and many other cases as well. So ju, just something else, I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other. Like I said, I, I agree and the attorney believes that this could really go one way or the other. Um, it's, it's, this is one of those, it's not an easy one to decide. There are concerns about the surrounding zoning, A2, uh, other, other people petitioning for, for similar. Um, but there's also concern that if those state laws change it, it may not matter anyway. Um, so.
I'm kind of on the fence, but I'm leaning towards it's already a duplex.
I'm on the fence because I don't want to see things changed, but if it's already been a duplex, it's been a duplex, as long as I can remember it. It's really going to hurt, go ahead and do it. If you keep his property, and now it's kind of investment, he wants to keep it up. I don't know. I, I...
But see, the, the thing is that I, I, um, there's some people that, let's say they, they made an addition to their home, right? You know, 10 years ago, something, whatever, made sense. Now they want to sell the home. If they didn't get a permit for that addition, that's a literal roadblock for you to sell the home. You just can't because what, you have to, you know, tear it all down and it just, so if we open that door here, you know, anybody, they'll go to, oh, no, that you can, oh, no, look, look at zoning case 43, you know, this much. You can just get a rezone because you'll be the innocent buyer, right? And we'll be held to the standards that we set here. Uh, right, even though I get what you're saying, right? It's a tough one. That, that's why, yeah, for, for council's definitely going to have fun with it.
I say we split the decision and put it on mail.
Any other discussion? Thoughts? Absolutely, yep. Absolutely, yep.
I have a question to ask. How large are rooms per? How many rooms are in each duplex, in each side?
Uh, there are two bedrooms.
In each one?
Yes, ma'am.
So they're sep-, is the housing is being separated by the garage?
Yes, so the front part, two bedroom, kitchen, living room, and then garage, garage, and the second unit.
All right, thank you.
To elaborate on that, the M1 zoning requires each living area to be a minimum of eight hundred square feet. It's more than sixteen hundred square foot home, it complies with the M1 zoning. We, we looked at that part as well.
Any other comments or motions? So Craig, one more time, the, if we deny, it wouldn't mean demolition, he wouldn't have to tear it down.
No, he would not, no, he would not have to tear it down.
All right.
Denial would just be the recommendation that would come from the P&amp;Z to the city council meeting on the eighth.
Right. All right, a motion that we deny, the zoning case number four three six zero at two hundred West Enon Avenue.
A second emotion that we deny.
Are we ready for the vote?
Yes, so we're going to do a roll call vote. A vote of yea means you're voting to deny it. A vote of nay means you're not. All right, so I'll start with Brenda Edmund.
Deny.
So vote to deny, yea, okay. Or May Hill? Tony Young?
Yea.
Judy Wellborn? And President Ricky Garcia?
Yea.
Okay, motion carries. So what will happen is, is the, the recommendation coming out of here will be for denial, but on April eighth will be the city council meeting, so definitely plan to be here for April eighth at six, at six o'clock, and they'll hear the same case just like tonight, okay? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's go to council first, and then, once council decides yes, he can rip off the case.
All right, next item is the capital improvement plan. We hear from different department directors.
Well, we're going to start with me. So we are doing things a little bit differently this year, and Gilbert, do you mind showing my screen? We're doing things a little bit differently this year, and it's up behind you as well as on the TV in front of you. We have, since our last capital improvement plan, and we provided some copies to you, the ones that all of you were here for, and worked very hard on, we have gone through and looked at the projects, and the majority of the projects that were identified in the prior capital improvement plan, I am very proud to say, have been completed. We've done a very good job over the last four and a half years of trying to knock out a lot of these projects through various, various methods. Some of the projects we're going to talk about tonight, what we're doing that's differently is, the city has upgraded its budgeting software to what we call Open Gov budgeting. It allows for more engagement, it allows for more tracking of information, and we plan to share this through stories that'll be available to the public eventually, as we're, we're looking to engage more on this. So all of this information and data gets put into the Open Gov platform that you're seeing here. What we're going to do is, we're going to go through these projects kind of one at a time and discuss them, and then get feedback from you on whether or not you believe the project qualifies in one of several categories. And if you flip onto just page two of the old capital improvement plan, these are the categories you have to choose from. Urgent, committed, necessary, desirable, deferrable, research, or inconsistent. If the project is either identified as research or inconsistent, it's pretty much going to be removed from the plan and kicked back to staff for them to work on and bring back at some point in the future. The urgent is the highest priority, meaning that, that this needs, this is an urgent need. Committed means that it is part of an existing contractual agreement or otherwise legally required. We will, we did not have any of those in our prior capital improvement plan, we will have at least one of those in this, in this update, and I'll explain that as we get to. Necessary means that it's needed to maintain an existing level of quality of community services. Desirable means it's needed to improve the quality of level, I should say, quality level of services. And deferrable means it can be placed on hold until after a seven-year period, but it does support community development goals. So the first one we're going to start with is right up here at the very top, animal services shelter. Eventually, once, once we finish kind of getting all of this updated, you guys will actually have the ability to log into this from your home and review these and make comments on them as needed, so that we all have access. We are anticipating an animal services shelter to cost the city approximately two million dollars. The city is, if, if you're not aware, the city over the last few years has entered into some partnerships with some neighboring cities, primarily the city of Forest Hill. So now we provide municipal animal control services to both Everman and Forest Hill. There are other municipalities who are interested in jumping on board with this program, however, our current shelter just does not meet the need. We just don't, we simply don't have enough space to house the amount of animals that our staff is already having to deal with. Unfortunately, what that means is, our staff has to work really hard at trying to get adoptions and rescues to move the dogs out of the shelter, because once we get to capacity, dogs have to go one way or the other, and unfortunately, sometimes that means, that means euthanasia because of capacity. So the goal is, we don't want to, and animal services doesn't want to, have to euthanize any animal because of space. We want to solve that. So, the goal here would be to add a new shelter. Additionally, in addition to the space issues and the fact that the shelter is, is old, it's dilapidated, it's falling apart, it's also not in a very good location. It is off the beaten path, it's kind of tucked away behind some, some homes, nobody knows where it's at. You actually have to cross private property through an easement to even get to it, which has caused some problems, because if we get somebody who is coming down to the shelter and they decide to drive thirty or forty-five miles an hour across that property, that obviously the property owner very happy. So there's, there's just some issues there that we would like to resolve. Our goal would be to have a shelter in a location that is highly visible. That way it helps to promote adoptions. We want it to be easily accessible and, and get the faces out there as much as possible. One spot that we have identified that the city already owns, so it wouldn't require the city to go out and spend any dollars on acquiring land, is right there next to Johnson Park, along Dan Meyer, just on the west side, let me pull it up on a map and I'll show you. Just on the west side of Dan Meyer Boulevard.
So we're starting with the animal shelter?
Yes. Yes. So the city actually owns a pretty significant tract of land right here, and our goal would be to put this shelter right here off of Everman Parkway and Dan Meyer. A, it's highly visible, B, it's not too proximal to single-family residential. The shelter design that I'm going to show you here in a minute is an all indoor shelter, so we're not talking about putting dogs outside, they're going to be barking and disturbing neighbors or disturbing, disturbing nearby businesses. We were taking all that into consideration. Let me go back, and let me pull up the, the plans to show you.
They're in there.
Yes. We have already begun work and engaged, that is not the plans. Oh, it's the whole agenda, I did not mean to do that. I need to change that out. So this is Everman Parkway here, this is Dan Meyer, this is where the shelter would be situated with access from both Everman Parkway and Dan Meyer with a parking lot up front. This back parking lot would be for employee use, this is where the proposed building would be, and we would have two fenced-in yards, one here and one outside. The second yard, the larger yard, is what we would call the play yard. That's an opportunity for dogs to get out and engage in some exercise, play with the staff, also an opportunity for the dogs to get out and do any meet and greets, if we have potential adopters that want to come up and play with the dog, engage with the dog. This surface area here would actually be turf rather than just grass, so it has a nice soft space for the dogs to play on. Keep going here. This is what the layout of the building would look like, so as you enter in through the front door here, you would enter into a nice greeting lobby that would be available there. Currently, I don't know how many of you have ever been down to our current shelter, but when you open the door and you walk into the shelter, you walk into a hallway that is about two and three-quarter foot wide, it's tiny. That's, that's what you walk into. There's an office, and then you go into the kennel spaces. There's no real lobby that's welcoming. To see the faces of some of the people that walk into our shelter and go, oh, man, they get, they get real claustrophobic real quick, and it kind of deters some people, I'm afraid. But this would be a great lobby with a reception desk here available. One of the things that our, our municipal animal services has been pitching and doing a lot of is a lot more vaccinations and a lot more microchipping. We actually just did a free microchipping clinic in Forest Hill, we've got another one coming up over here pretty soon. So we want people to be able to bring their dogs up, get microchipped, we don't charge for any of that, it's completely free, and get them taken care of. It would include a public restroom. As you walk back, here's a meet and greet room inside, in case for whatever reason weather is bad outside, they have the opportunity to meet and greet in a secure room, so that way we don't have to worry about dogs getting loose or, or running out the front door or any of that. We do have a secure meet and greet room, and a pre-meet room where the, the animal services employees can walk the dog into, and then a secure door to bring that dog into the meet and greet room, so again, we don't have to worry about any animals potentially escaping. A cat room, the cat room is where the cats would, would be stored. They have a lower cat population than a dog population, so those are all indoors, a cat supply closet, women's bathroom, men's bathroom. Two quarantines, one's called quarantine, the other one's called sick, but they're actually both quarantine rooms. State says that we have to have two quarantine rooms in the event of a dog, if we have, if we bring in a dog that just bit somebody, that dog has to go into quarantine for a certain period of time. If the dog is sick with any potential illnesses, that dog has to go into quarantine, so there's several reasons to put a, put a dog in a quarantine. This, this shelter would include two exam rooms. The shelter does currently contract with a vet who comes out to the shelter to provide any inspections and treatments and stuff of animals. Also, anytime that the ACO staff has to do any sort of onsite first aid or treatment, they have the exam room capability there. A break room, which staff currently does not have, they have no break room space, anywhere to kind of just sit back for a minute and unwind. Two additional office spaces, lots of closet space, a food prep area, a dog food storage room, which you wouldn't believe the amount of dog food that they have to go through, but we do need a full room, and then a freezer room. Going out from there, you would go into the kennel spaces, and there's more than, I think there's thirty-five kennel spaces total out here with a Sally Port. The reason for the Sally Port is, it has happened where sometimes we get a, a pretty hyperactive or aggressive dog, animal control gets out there to the shelter, they put the dog on the collar, for whatever reason, go to move the dog inside, that dog gets loose. We don't want a dog to get loose. This will allow them to pull the truck up into the shelter, close the door, get the dog out, and bring the dog in without any risk of that dog escaping, so it keeps it fully secure. All these kennels on this side are called kennel runs with indoor/outdoor access, so these are actually all outdoor. This is where we would put more of the aggressive dogs, larger and aggressive dogs. Reason being is because animal control can actually open up and lift up this door here, allowing the dog to run out and then close the door, not having to put their hands on any of the dogs itself. It's just a safer way of them moving the dogs in or out when they go through and do their cleanings, either, either the ACOs or the volunteers and staff to help out. Total square footage is about seventy-five hundred. Just some concept designs of it, it's, it's a strand steel metal building with a brick facade front to match what we've done here at the civic center and what we've done at the fire station, to try to keep some consistency with our, with our newer buildings, so that more old, older style architecture. Seventy-five hundred, seven thousand five hundred. I'm sorry?
Side to side.
Uh, there you go. Yeah, I can't see either, fifty foot wide. You would ask me that, hold on, hundred and fifty.
Placing it right there is secure, so kids walking back to school, to the apartments, there's no danger for it.
Correct, yes, that was a thought of, you know, you've got to balance visibility with safety, when we're talking about an animal shelter, and noise too, you know, dog shelters are typically loud, that's why we're doing an all indoor here. We don't want to disturb any neighbors, we don't want to deter any potential development, we don't want any of that. So we want this to be an all indoor facility. So we took a lot of that into consideration in the plans, in talking with the engineer on this. All of the areas where the kennels are would all be spray foamed insulated all the way around to help with noise and, and keep that down as well. But yes, we, we've thought about safety and everything all the way around. Any questions? Kind of give you a breakdown of the cost, where you believe the building and construction was about one point nine million dollars. Office supplies, new office supplies would cost us about ten thousand, five thousand dollars in minor equipment, three thousand dollars in major equipment, computers for the new facility, fifteen thousand dollars, and then animal control supplies, thirty thousand dollars, for a total of two million dollars. Any questions?
Well, I was looking at this sheet, and I was looking at the new city hall. So I'm looking at four million one hundred, you know, three point two million. I don't see the city hall. Turn that into a dog shelter.
We're going to talk about the city hall, it's still on here too, but I'll tell you, kind of the direction I've gotten from the majority of council, and I think staff would all agree too, is, is our opinion and the staff recommendation is that the shelter needs to take priority, that the need for it is just so bad right now. We desperately need a new shelter. Now, I will say, there is the potential, and, and again, we're talking about capital improvement plan, so you can identify as much money as you want to and identify the projects. What we do with the capital improvement plan is we identify the projects and try to incorporate those into the budget, giving what you've identified in the order of priority. So, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't stress too much about identifying too much money up front, that's, that's our job to go back and figure out. With this animal services shelter, there's a few things that we've been pursuing, one of those is a grant to help fund it. Unfortunately, all grants have kind of been put on hold from this specific department we were pursuing it through, so we're not so sure that's going to happen. But there are other alternatives for us to offset those costs. That includes the sale of the current land and property where the shelter is at, there's some value in that, so when the new shelter is built and we move over, there's some value in where it currently sits, that the city probably has no interest in, it might be who of the city to sell that off and roll those proceeds back into the cost of the shelter. I believe that property's been appraised at about three hundred thousand dollars, so that's, that's helpful. You're also talking about partnerships with other cities, so there's revenue sources there that could help offset some of the payments and cost of, of a new facility and things. So, this one is feasible, it's pretty feasible. I, I, my hope personally is, I'd, I'd love to get this thing going as sooner rather than later, I'd love to see us get the funding secured for this within the next year, so we can start breaking ground on it. What we need from y'all is just your thoughts on where the priorities should be. Now, we don't have to take a vote on it tonight, because we're going to do an initial identification, and then at the end, when we list them all out for you, then you would vote on that and make any changes then, but just kind of get a consensus from you tonight on where you think the priority should be.
So the, we have to prioritize the urgent projects?
So, you're prioritizing, you, you need to select on this project whether you want to list it as urgent, necessary, desirable, or deferrable.
Okay. So it's already in the, in a category in urgent projects?
No, it's not in a category of urgent.
Okay.
Urgent is a separate category, so urgent is the most, is the- So urgent is the most, is the highest priority.
Right.
That's a Kelly Drive. Wichita.
Next one.
That's a Kelly Drive or Wichita. Jesus, this street is terrible. Oh, I know, I'm talking about Kelly. Kelly's as bad as Wichita.
So necessary?
Necessary.
You all agree, necessary?
I agree.
All right.
Necessary. And we're not going to go through all these projects tonight. We'll do a hard stop here at about seven thirty, and go on to the next one. I'm going to jump down to, let's jump down to the fire department brush truck and land in all the, and talk.
All right. So I'm not going to read verbatim, and I don't have my open go login on my laptop, so. So we're including this into the capital improvement plan, but with a major caveat, I've actually already been funded for it. But it's a capital expenditure, so we want to go ahead and make sure we place it in there. I've got you a couple examples of what our goal, our plan is to mimic in here. That is a sixty-five hundred International chassis. We were awarded the grant through Texas Forest Service for a total of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to build this. Now, if I was to reach out to Skeeter, who built this rig, somewhere around three hundred thousand. But I'm a magician, and I'm going to make it work for a hundred and thirty thousand, so. But this is, the ask is for it to be placed as the highest priority, obviously because I'm already funded, and I've got to proceed with the project and complete it by October thirty-first, which would be into next fiscal year. So we're currently in the process of looking for and acquiring the chassis so that I can start piecemealing everything together and build that out. That would become the first out brush truck for our large, if we have something that's dispatched as a one-to-two or greater acre grass fire, or any of our, if we get a deployment or we need to go further south, and we're going, the concern is going to be for a bigger water source, because this truck is going to be required to carry five hundred gallons or more of water. So my plan is to do at least five hundred, but possibly even up to a six hundred and seven hundred gallon tank on this, so. But we're actually looking, after speaking with command staff, we've decided that they like to do a single cab just for simplicity, and then we don't have to worry about the depth and issues with the station, so. But there's not much more to it than that, other than I'm getting ready to do some more mechanic and build another truck. So I want to give it a highest priority so that I can, we can kick off the capital improvement with a task that already gets completed.
Let me ask you a question. You say a single cab, that's going to get two people to that fire.
That's all that's required on a brush truck.
I understand that, but if you go out to Palapinto or wherever, where the city is burning for miles, two people going to fight that thing?
So typically, right now, currently with a red flag warning, is we all love the fires, we've responded with the tanker and with the brush truck or the squad, because that'll take four firefighters with them, just for the additional staff, and then whatever we have to go do, fill up or tanker shuttles and stuff. But that's all based on the response model, but generally speaking, the brush trucks, the squads, whatever, are going to be staffed or manned with two people. That's an industry standard. One in the front cab and then one in the back. Right now, the squad that we developed, actually, they get to fight fire from the backseat, but they have all, even though they get to sit in the comfort of the air conditioner and they can go side to side with the back window, they all really want to hop in the back and go fight fire out of the bed of the truck. So, all right, be where we're Jewish for. So that's what we're going to go with. And that's why the recommendation from them was to go with a single cab, so that we would add the funding in order to get a new brush bed, because obviously it's going to be fifteen thousand dollars cheaper, ten, fifteen thousand dollars cheaper to get a single cab truck. So loosening up the funds to get options when we build the bed.
Why would you put that in your urgent then?
Yep.
He's already got the money.
You got to do it.
Why would you not do it?
Urgent, everybody?
Urgent.
Okay, it's listed as it.
How fast do you think you'll be able to, by October?
I have to.
It has to be finished.
Grant has to be, I can apply for an extension, but I'd like to, I'd rather not, but the grant has to be fulfilled without an extension by October thirty-first.
Bring it to the tree lighting.
They'll drive the heck out of it, without a doubt. It'll be the new fun toy. The one that has now has forty-two inch tall tires. That set up with the super single is set up with forty-six inch tall tires, so they'll love that one.
All right, I'm going to jump down to professional services. This is a pavement condition report. One of the things, talking about streets, one of the things that we have always done historically is we have decided what streets and what improvements need to be made just by personal knowledge or based on complaints that are received from the citizens. The city has never gone out and done a pavement condition report. A pavement condition report is essentially where we hire a professional services contractor or an engineering firm to come out. They will bring out specialized equipment that will drive up and down our streets using radar, video, et cetera. They'll drive down every single one of our streets, assess the pavement, assess the subgrade of the pavement, and provide back a report that indicates the status of every single one of our streets. That report is then compared with a traffic study report that will essentially allow the engineers to take that data and prioritize which of our streets are the worst and the heaviest traffic that we need to address in order. I think it's probably wise for us, we've never done this, to get that data. I'd like to see our street improvement decisions that are being made be data-driven, not just based on personal observations and some guesses. To show you an example, the city of Kaufman in 2023 did a similar study, fifty-six page study, and they do drive up and down every single one of the streets. I'm going to zoom in here for you. They do drive up and down every single one of the streets to get a pavement condition report. Oh, I zoomed out too far. Oh my goodness, my computer's not going to cooperate with me. They'll provide a lot of information and feedback on deterioration rates, streets, how long our streets should survive. Typically, what we try to do is we want every time that we do a street rebuild, that street should have a lifespan of twenty to thirty years. Our streets currently are having a lifespan of about eight to ten years before we are needing to do some major repairs to them. So I know that Gilbert's and Public Works team has done a really good job of trying to improve the maintenance programs and things associated with our streets. We just actually acquired through an auction a crack fill machine so that they can go out themselves and do the crack fills and maintain our streets better and do a better job of it. Let me show you. This is a van that you see that comes out that does a lot of the studies using radar technology cameras and so forth. That'll drive up and down each and every one of our streets to provide this data back to us. Let me scroll back down. Just trying to show you. Here we go. Here's some of the imaging results that come back from that, showing the cracks. It'll identify cracks, upgrade failures, what's called alligatoring, which is typically indicating that it's a complete failure, complete road failure, base has got to be replaced. So they'll be able to compile all of this stuff for us in a report to provide back to us. Here's the radar imaging that comes back. Provide all of this back to us in a report so that we can then take that, working with the engineers, and prioritize our street replacements. This is where the PCI will be ranged, telling us which streets are good, satisfactory, fair, poor, very poor, serious, or completely failed. I think it's just going to give us a good starting point for us to do. If you remember, we talked at our last meeting about the city establishing a rotating bond program, meaning that a set period of time, the city will regularly go out for bonds. We have historically not done that. We've just kind of sat back and put bandages on things until we said, okay, maybe it's time we go out for a bond, and then we see if we can go out for a bond and go out for a bond. I've been working with our financial advisors to set up a rotational bond and believe that we can do so while having little to no impact on tax rate every five years. So that five-year cycle would actually begin starting calendar year 2027. It's approaching very quickly. I know it doesn't sound like it's approaching quickly, but that means it would have to go to election in 2026, get approved, all this stuff would happen, so it could happen potentially very quickly. Before we get to that point, I think, and I think the council would agree, and y'all would probably agree, that one of the number-one things we probably need to focus some bond funds on are for streets. I just don't want it to be the last time we did a bond package and we focused that funding on streets. We focused it on streets and then went back and tore up the same streets to put in some water lines, and we didn't necessarily focus it on the streets that I think should have been focused on. I think having some data to support our decision-making on that would be very helpful. So the cost for the study is sixty thousand dollars. Study takes about six months to complete, and the company actually comes out of Georgia, will come down here and do that, Georgia and Florida, two different spots, but they would come out of one of those two states to complete that study. And it'd be our recommendation that we align this with urgent, because I don't really think we should be spending any more dollars on streets until we have data to support what streets to fix.
I had a perfect example, and it's right in front of my house.
Okay.
Between Langley and Sneak.
Uh huh.
Move the hydrant to the outside, the water line, many water lines don't want to be there. It's down to the rebar on that street, on that corner.
Oh, wow.
The big trucks go away. And you can see it's rocks, and it's rebar, and it's like, one of these days, you know, it's that bad.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Anyway, that's my example, we got to do something.
Yeah, this will really help us make informed decisions and also so that our people know that we're making informed decisions, because there won't be, you know, squeaky wheel, it has to be whatever, yeah, data-driven.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think this should be an urgent.
Okay.
I think they've done a good job with the reputation, paving and stuff, and doing all that they're doing, but now it's kind of got to get research, but this idea is important.
Yeah.
Twelve sixty pounds, and you get a survey, and you're out soon, and you know exactly where you're at. That's not.
That's good.
Yeah.
And eggs are fucking.
Yeah. Price is down now, sir. All right, let's jump down to. I don't want to jump on this just yet. Where is it? I'm looking for it. Hold on. Did I pass it? Ah, okay. So new municipal complex. Previously, in our capital improvement plan, we identified a new city hall, and the price at that time was two point one eight five, two point one million dollars. Obviously, in 2020, when we first did this, the cost of many things have gone up. Additionally, this proposal is slightly different from the prior one. The prior proposal was just for a standalone city hall building. We have outgrown city hall. Obviously, that's why we're meeting over here now, is because we've had to convert the old chambers into office space. Public Works is no longer in city hall because Public Works has outgrown their office space in there. They're now located over where the old library used to be in the DAGs building. Police Department is outgrown, the police department, with the centralized dispatch center and converting that. We have, we're pretty much busting at the seams in the police department as well. We have twenty-five officers. Officers share. The majority of the spaces out in the field, but they don't have any real, any of that kind of stuff always has to occur over here. We've actually had to move a couple of officers out of the police department because we've outgrown it, and they're also located in the DAGs building in an office. So our thought was, how do we bring everybody back together into one location so that we can work together? And the thought was a municipal complex. This idea and concept would replace the existing library building and the existing service center building and put in a brand-new facility that would go all the way down the strip, close to where the existing city hall was, and physically connect to the police department. So we would have one full municipal complex for city hall, Public Works, and police, all in one building. The only thing that would not be connected would be the fire station, which is fifteen feet from the front door of the detective police department.
They can hear me yell, it's okay.
So we have worked with an engineer to try to identify some potential cost, and we do have a potential design for this, and I'll go ahead and share this with you. This is, again, just a concept design. And yes, it is rather large, but this is where the existing police department is currently. This is, right here is where the library, or the old library currently sits. The buildings would connect together to provide a hallway and everything that comes together. What we would like is for the main city hall entrance for people who come in to pay their water bill or have citations, any kind of service needs permits, to have an entrance here that faces Ray Street with a parking out in front, a large foyer with secure windows here. One of the things that is concerning for us in our existing facility is the safety and security is not up to par. That building was built in nineteen seventy-three. Safety and security was not at the top of the concern in nineteen seventy-three where it is today. I mean, that building is over fifty-two years old. Also with that, the offices aren't exactly easily accessible. You know, you walk up to a window, if you need something other than paying a water or paying your citation, like a permit or something, there's no service window available, and usually Donna's going to have to come out from an office from somewhere else to come up and meet with somebody. It's just not convenient for the resident, it's not convenient for our developers, it's kind of a pain. So we have worked really hard on designing this. We still have some recommended changes, but we've worked very hard on designing this to where it was comfortable and accessible for residents, as well as keeping the employees safe and providing accessibility while keeping that safety in mind. We wanted to provide, this is showing a library, it's actually, what we're wanting to do is put in a computer room, a public access computer room, similar to like what we have over at city hall now. We have three public access computers, so if anybody needs to come in, if they don't have broadband, they need to come in and access a computer or print items off, they have the ability to come in and do that in this, in what's listed as the library on here. We also have put a small meeting room here, so if we have somebody that comes into city hall, needs to have a sit-down meeting with somebody, we don't necessarily have to bring them back into secure areas. You know, we have a lot of very sensitive documents in city hall, property deeds, city hall records, municipal records, all kinds of things. So we don't want to bring anybody and everybody back into the secure areas, so we have a designated meeting space where they can sit down and visit with them here. Coming over to the left side, we would have a designated space for city council and court. This is designed to be shared between city council and court, so it could be easily converted between the two. That would seat ninety-four seats. Currently, to give you an idea, I think this is set up for fifty, is that right? Yeah. So to give you an idea of ninety-four seats, the seating that you see out here right now is set up for fifty, so it'd be a little bit larger seating than what we have in here. The overall room size, I think, would be significantly smaller, but seating for ninety-four capacity, with a large dais up front and the ability to set it up for court or for city council meetings either way. There would be a separate foyer entrance, because oftentimes we have meetings after hours, right? City hall's not necessarily open, so we would have a separate foyer entrance and two here coming off of Trammell Street where people could come in and enter in specifically for those meetings and exit for those meetings without having to go off city hall. Several office spaces, including the mayor's office located directly next to where the city council chambers would be, also with a meeting conference room located directly off the chambers for items like executive session and those kinds of things. When we have to break out of that room, we've got a room to go into to host those meetings, whereas before, when we were across the street, if we ever had to go into executive session, we were going into the kitchen, and hanging out in the kitchen, and that's where executive session was. A lot of city admin offices and things. I believe the fire chief's office was also looking to be moved over here as well to be a part of city admin. Not so sure how he feels about that, but we have talked about potentially moving him over. Fire storage is not what you think. It's not storage for the fire department. That is the size of the room that would be needed for the fire suppression system and everything else for this building. Correct? No, fireproof storage, I'm sorry. That's fireproof storage.
For documents, that would give them like a two-hour rating.
Yep. Sorry, it's been a while since we've designed this building.
Just the minimum standards. It's got to be the UIL standards.
Just the minimum standards. They've gotta be the UIL standards.
This concept design also includes a quiet room. Um, we have, we employ a lot of, of young women, and we have had a lot of young women over the years who have carried some babies. And in that time, we have learned that, hey, sometimes these women who carry babies need, need a space. They need a private space. Um, so we've designated this room as, as the quiet room where the women would have the ability to go and use that space appropriately. Um, I think we've, we've had to modify our women's restroom in city hall to meet that need, and that's not exactly the most conducive environment. Court is right up here up front. So this would be Edna's office. Here's where the court window is, right here. Right off the main entrance coming off of Race. And again, none of this is finalized. This is, again, very conceptual, very early. I mean, this is absolutely far from, from being finalized. Um, inside the city hall, we also would like to establish an EOC, which is an emergency operations center. Um, it's where whenever we have, um, any sort of emergency or major event where police, fire, EMS, command, any sort of, uh, outside resources can, can gather to coordinate those resources in the field. We've included locker spaces here as well, including police department, um, office spaces, uh, and additional police department office spaces to help out there. And then a gym, a small gym for employees because we don't currently have any sort of gym space. It's only a twenty-five by twenty-four gym space, so it's, it's a very small gym space, but we have nothing to offer any of our employees, yet we employ police officers and firefighters who we expect to be physically fit and offer them no opportunity to attain that fitness. So our hope would be is that providing a space in here would encourage physical fitness and wellness for our employees. So that is the very early-on conceptual idea. Total square footage of the building, uh, twenty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-six. It's a large building. And with this concept, the current city hall would be converted into a parking lot. A parking lot. All right. Any thoughts?
Looks good.
Any questions?
Four million.
Four million, yes. That's the anticipated cost of that facility would be four million dollars. I don't anticipate it to happen soon, but we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it, so.
It is nice.
Need the plan poured at some point.
Any questions?
I put in the necessary. I think it's necessary. That's the thought.
What about urgent?
Yeah. Necessary?
They want necessary.
Yeah. Necessary?
Not up to the other, to find the timing, that's up to.
Yeah.
It's the need.
And we said we're necessary?
But if you don't do it now, it's gonna be more expensive.
I'm good with urgent. I mean, this needs to be done, but put urgent on that and the, the dog deal you're talking about.
Oh, okay.
You're talking about a lot of screaming citizens right now. I'm on my pothole thing here, a water leak here.
Right.
When necessary.
I think we should have our focal point, the city hall.
I agree.
It's got to be, everything's gotta come from there.
Well, here's been my crap from when I was on the council. How could you go out and tell somebody they need to do work on their house or something like that, the minimum standards plan they're going to do? How you gonna go do that in that city hall that looks like that?
But here we are.
And you can't film? I'm good with urgent. I can do it.
So we have a shelter as what again?
Necessary.
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 Put both on the urgent. I won't move both on the urgent. I got a package. Are they both urgent?
So the shelter's more urgent, right, because we don't.
Move both urgent.
Right. Now, for the, yeah, if we're not worried about the funding.
If we're not worried about the money, yes, urgent.
Yeah, I mean, I think they would have both be urgent. I just wanna, yeah, I mean.
Well, I think we're gonna have a whole lot more than this.
Right, right, yeah, and I, see, my hope is that with the street project that we, it's also urgent. Uh, that'll really help us with the streets, because I think that's where we were stuck last time, was just a bunch of street. So both.
I'll talk about one more project and then Jared's thirty-seven-thirty, so I don't know if you wanna continue or, or. We, we've got a ton more projects, but we're gonna have to come back for several meetings for all of them. Uh, but the one additional project, I just, and this is mainly kind of a, a heads up. Um, one of the projects that's gonna come before you is a community rec center for the amount of five million dollars.
Oh.
Um, that project is being worked on by the mayor's youth advisory council. Um, if you're not aware, the city council, uh, created a mayor's youth advisory council, and at the first meeting with the mayor's youth advisory council, it's been a lot of fun working with them. Um, and you can, you can stop sharing my screen if you want, sorry. Um, it's been a lot of fun working with them, but, uh, the, uh, they were tasked with picking an initiative this year. Um, each year, we're gonna task them with picking one initiative so that at the end of the year, when they're done, they can say that they accomplished one major thing. Uh, their major thing this year was that they wanted to see the city commit to building a rec center. Um, so we said, okay, let's see if we can make that happen. So they actually have a meeting, um, not next week, but the following week, with, uh, the same engineering firm that built this for us. Uh, he's willing to come out, he's volunteering his time to engage with them and to design a conceptual rec center and put together some conceptual cost. And they're actually going to come back before you themselves and present this proposal and project uh, with the goal of, of hopefully incorporating this in the capital improvement plan at some point. Um, they are well aware that there are priorities within the city. Um, they know that this is probably not gonna wind up being the top priority, and this is probably not going to be built within the next couple of years. Uh, but their goal is, they wanna get it on the radar, and they want the city to, to keep it on the radar. So that's their goal, is to pitch it to you, and then once it's pitched to you, they're gonna make the same pitch to city council and, and hopefully keep it in the capital improvement plan. So that's, that's where it's at.
Well, I was in the city council last morning to rebuild that basketball court up there in the park, Johnson Park. Everybody kept saying, oh, no, they'll just tear it up, blah, blah, blah. I'm like, yeah. Right now, dropping about all the kids going around doing the graffiti and stealing and doing all that, what else they got to do?
Yeah.
And they ain't got nothing to do. They're gonna get in trouble.
Well, and it's, a lot of this is a learning, yeah, a lot of this is a learning experience for them. They're excited, they're fired up. So I, I hope, I hope you challenge them a little bit, give them, make them work for it, um, but I wanted to put it on your radar a little bit. Correct. Correct. And yeah, just because it goes in the capital improvement plan doesn't mean it's getting done in the next five years. The capital improvement plan is, is our, is our plan, it's our goal. When funding becomes available, where should that funding go? That's when we refer to that capital improvement plan and say, okay, this is what planning and zoning has put all the work into. This is what city council has identified. These are the priorities. This is where the funding is gonna go. So I think, I think it's a good effort by them. Um, I'm, I'm glad that they picked that. I think it'll be a lot of fun for them, and I look forward to them coming before you. And I hope, I hope you challenge them a little bit.
I say, uh, desirable?
Well, we don't have to pick it now.
Oh!
Yeah, don't have to pick it now. I, again, I was just talking about it because it is in here, it's gonna show up on your list when I print your list next time. I just didn't want you to look at it and go, okay, what is that? We haven't talked about that one yet. Yeah.
Put it all the way. All right.
All right.
Anything else?
No, sir. Unless you want me to keep going, or we're gonna do.
All right. Wait, at seven PM, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, seven thirty-six. Meeting is adjourned.